I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is with us one and the same. Under God, we invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome Mayor One, and we really do have lots of people here tonight. Great. Appreciate you coming out. This thing that masks is the great unknown right now, I think. Connie, would you be able to give us a little call?
Yep. A couple of people in here. Uh-oh. It's not one. Myland, Andy, Filberto, Lauren, and Kevin's on here.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you. I have one announcement to make regarding our council. Judy Buck notified me today that she's resigning immediately. She's already left her position at the Emergency Operations Center, and she'll be removed, returning to Columbia where she had lived before. We're going to necessarily thank the council and the people participating in the council for their help and their time. She said, "Goldendale is a wonderful town, and I'm grateful for the time I was spent here." She wished us all counsel at its very best, her very best. We're gonna miss her. She was a very good council person. She was active and very positive in her work, and we will miss her a lot. I've already written to let her know that we would be announcing this resignation tonight. With that, we don't have a public hearing tonight, but we do have an amendment we need to introduce for the agenda. If you have the agenda in front of you, it shows that we would adjourn the meeting and then have the events committee meeting. It's just reverse. We will go through, do the events committee meeting here during council, and then adjourn city council following that. So the order has just changed slightly. We have a motion to accept the amendment.
I say move, Mayor.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to amend the city council and consent agenda and the agenda for this council meeting to show the order of our events committee and adjournment for the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have everybody except Kevin probably.
Somebody's making a noise. Kevin, are you trying to talk?
Okay, we're gonna go on to the next item of the presentations, and the first one will be by Corley McFarlane. He's gonna give us an airport update. Is Corley on the line, Larry?
Yes.
I believe so.
Corley?
I am. How do you hear me?
Glad to hear from you.
It is good to see you. Oddly enough, my video appears to have failed, but it's Monday, right?
It's Monday, and nobody broke that video.
I promise. I didn't even plan that.
So Corley, why don't you go ahead and give us an update on our current project, and also, if you wouldn't mind, talking about the project that we are proposing for funding through the Department of Transportation Aviation Division through their local, through their grant program that they have available to the airport owners.
That sounds good. Thank you, Larry. We'll take it away. So when we met last, we had just provided our recommendation to award the fuel system project to, the equipment portion of the fuel system project, to Mascot Equipment. And since our last meeting together, that contract, it took a little while to get all the paperwork together, but that contract was awarded early this month, as well as the notice to proceed to start with the fabrication of the equipment. We quickly, because the critical path is the fuel tank, we finished the submittal review provided by Mascot and have returned and approved fuel tank submittal to them so that they can get the tank commission and get that built, since that's the longest lead time item for the project. And then we've continued with the second part of the project, which is the site development portion of the bid package, and have that in a good place right now. We're just waiting on the foundation design from Mascot, which is part of their contract to provide the design for their tank. Once we get that in the next couple of weeks, we'll finalize our design and submit final permits and bid the site development portion of the project. So that's where we're on that. I think, Greg, kind of, it was good when we got the equipment contract bid when we did. Steel prices have continued to go up, and so I'm feeling good, and we locked in that price by executing that contract with your approval last meeting. So I feel like we're in a good position on that project. So Larry, one for you. I haven't seen anything. We kind of also talked about reappropriation into the state's next fiscal year for the Department of Commerce grant. That, like we discussed last time, is kind of a formality, but I haven't seen anything from Department of Commerce. Have you heard from our contacts there yet?
I have not heard from them, but my understanding was that we completed all the paperwork properly, and it would be reauthorized. But I'll double, I can double check.
That's my understanding as well. Sorry about that. That's funny. What was that?
I just said I will double check, but that was my last understanding, that it was reauthorized.
Yeah, that was mine as well. So I'm still waiting for the firm foundation schedule for Mascot, but like I said, I anticipate that in the next couple of weeks. And then I have not, seeing now that they have a contract and they're buying equipment, I have not, they're still kind of getting their project schedule together for when we can anticipate fabrication of all the equipment and when it'll be ready to bring on-site and put into commissioning. So that's what we'll be coordinating on in the next couple of weeks. Larry, anything else on the fuel system?
No, not unless there's any, not unless there's any questions regarding that. Okay, go on to the second item.
Okay, so I think there's a unique opportunity for Goldendale right now in the form of a Washita Aviation grant application. And this is an annual application. Typically, they authorize 1.1 to about 1.3 million annually. Why I say it's unique this year is that the FAA is funding all of the FAA-funded projects at 100%. And so what that means for Goldendale, if they choose to pursue a project, is that there's gonna be a lot less competition this year, because you won't have the traditional project list of Washington airports requesting a portion of the sponsors match associated with an FAA grant, because those FAA grants are traditionally a 90% FAA, 10% sponsor-funded grant. And so Larry and I talked a little bit about that and what a good project might be, and what we came up with that aligns with your current state CIP that's on, for the airport that's on file with Washita Aviation, is to kind of continue our fuel system paving and extend that further west. If you kind of think back to our exhibit and our fuel system, we had built in the taxi lane to the fuel, to the fuel system, just kind of west of the apron now, and we could continue that and open up the first couple hangar lots. So it's not a tremendously high priority project in Washita's book, but again, with this being a year where there's not gonna be the traditional FAA airport app, I think it's something worth considering, what Larry and I have talked about, that obligation to the county, if this was selected as a project, would be a 5% match for the total project, with Washita picking up the other 95%. So recognize that everybody's budgets are tight right now, especially given the current situation, but it is a pretty good funding source.
So when does that application, what is the application filing deadline?
The application filing deadline is Friday. It's a very simple application. We do them all the time. I'm still fine tuning the cost estimate, but we're kind of in that 350 to $450,000 project range. We can pare that back a little bit if desired, right? It all just kind of comes down to how many hangar lots we want to provide taxi lane access to. And then I think the other important thing to remember is that Washita will only pay for the taxi lane, and so that's gonna be a 25-foot-wide piece of pavement. There would still be costs, either that would need to be borne by the hangar developer or somebody else to make that final connection between the hangar building and the taxi lane proper. To me, I guess, kind of wanted to give you an informational brief on that and what, just some things I've talked about, Larry, and I don't know kind of what you want from me for the next steps, but I'm very happy to draft up that application and have it to you in time so that it can be signed and emailed to the state at the end of the week.
That should work.
Do we just need an agreement on that, or? Do we just need an agreement on that, council members?
Cory, what kind of action do you, do you need a concurrence vote or any kind of vote at all with regard to this, or a resolution?
So eventually, a resolution would be required accepting the grant, but that doesn't need to be done. Yeah, I think concurrent tonight to move forward would be great, and then we'll follow up with, I'll follow up with you with some resolution text at one of the next meetings.
Okay. I think we should go ahead with it. It sounds like it's free money.
Close as you get, yeah.
And the plans are already there to improve the airport, so.
Have we still got contact at all with Kevin?
I'm on board, Mayor. Anything that improves the airport. I kind of do wish we had a little more time to think about other improvements, but I'd say jump on it.
We have concurrence of council. That's, that's great. We appreciate it very much. Makes things move more smoothly. Any other item on the airport? Thank you, Corley, very much.
Thank you all. Sorry, sorry, my video didn't work, but great to catch up with you all, and I always appreciate being able to give you an update, and we're having fun, so thank you.
Terrific, terrific. Look forward to seeing you in person.
I can't wait. I'm excited as well.
Well, we've got a great number of folks here tonight, and we're sure glad to see them. Next presentation will be by Steve Johnston. Steve? You've got the floor. I don't think this is gonna hold at all. Okay. Start with. Actually, I'm gonna open up with a debate about this, but I want to comment. I'm here with certain amount of apprehension and trepidation, and that's due to the fact that I'm making a presentation in front of supposedly elected government body where the majority of the members have been installed. You would prefer to use the term appointed? And I understand that number is like four, soon to be five. Am I correct? Okay. I find that totally unacceptable, and I really hope, well, this year, that should be remedied. And I truly hope that the next elected council takes this issue up to prevent it from happening I know the folks that ended up in the positions volunteered. It's due to no, this is due to no fault of theirs. It's poor legislation and code is what it is. But we'll move on. The subject here is clarification of code and business identification. The situation that I'm gonna present to you manifested when the state of Washington, in its authoritarian wisdom, decided to usurp the right of the city to issue basic business licenses. I find this unacceptable, and I also believe there's a nefarious reason behind this. Time will tell. This ball just got rolling, folks. It's a brand example of government overreach and abuse of power. Now, if you look at that little packet that I've given you, and I'll go through it with It involves mobile home parks and the definition of a mobile home park and the ramifications of that business identification. It's in the wording, and it is ultimately important to the validity and the integrity of not just this business, but any business. And this authority to deal with this lies within this group, not with the state. I addressed Larry with this a couple of months or so ago, the old-fashioned way. I've lived in this community for over 60 years, ran various businesses, sat in this council for 18 years. I am fully aware of the importance of clarification in all respects, whether it be legal or business or legislative, and that's what we're dealing with here. Anyway, this packet starts, I've highlighted everything, and this information, folks, comes straight out of Goldendale Municipal Codes. And the other reason I'm here is Larry contacted me here, oh, I don't know, a couple of weeks or so ago, to assure me that he was not forgetting about me. And in the conversation, made a couple of comments that put me here. Those comments were, he thought he may have to run this by the attorneys and even the state. No, 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 not necessary. I believe it was Humberto that made a comment regarding attorney fees the city pays out. Totally unacceptable. Most of this business is conducted right here, and the city administrator works at the discretion of the council, not vice versa. Anyway, first page, mobile home placement. Definitions. Open it up. Mobile home park means any tract of land under single ownership used for the placement of two or more mobile homes or manufactured homes, users dwellings. This definition shall not apply to the placement of a temporary hardship unit on the same parcel with another home. And that is in the code 1544020. And as the cover page says, mobile home placement. Little redundancy here. This is straight out of the municipal code also, but it's using the same definition in a text. I think it's zoning. But anyway, same wording. And what I'm establishing here is the precedent that's already been set legally, through code, through legislation. And then on the third or fourth page, and you'll probably see a familiar name in here, it's Mr. Bellamy. He's fully aware of what's gone down here and no reason to check with attorneys or the state on this. I have theory on that, but I'm not going to take up any more of your time on that. Anyway, that one page, right there. Four dedicated pieces of property, land within the city, dedicated, recognized as mobile home parks, mine being one of them. And if you've noticed, I'm the small fry. And I must point out, if you look at the date, 1999, these numbers have changed significantly. And the purpose for the council dealing with this, I agreed with 100%, and it has worked. It has worked. Over the last 20-some years, a good number of the older single white mobile homes have become unlivable, and they're gone. That's good. That's good. When you have a dedicated place for single white mobile homes, you're accomplishing more than one thing here. One of them, affordable housing. Big issue everywhere. And secondly, I would like to make a point about Cottonwood RV Park. I have heard a number of folks, "Oh, my God, it's trashy, it's like..." It is no more out of control than other areas in this town with site-built houses on. And think about this. If it wasn't for that RV park down there, being ran like it is, over half of those people down there would be homeless. They'd be pitching tents on the streets in this city. Think about it. Anyway, we go on over here. The next page, again, this comes right out, right out of municipal code. I have here three months, three consecutive months of council meetings dealing with just this. How do you like this one? Has any council members in here seen a packet like this? You doubt it. When I came on to the city council 25 years or so ago, the city was in transition, just as it is right now. For two years, we were in here a number of times till midnight, straightening things out, and it's time to do it again. It's time to be proactive, not reactive. We've got growth coming at us like a runaway train, and we better be on top of it. And we ain't gonna need lawyers or the state to help us with our direction. We need to do our homework, that's all. But anyway, this page here, resolution number 338, is an example of the importance of identity of the business to establish validity. And the last two is a copy of my business license issued in 2001, and the last one issued by the city in 2020. I want you to notice, on that business license, it says mobile home park. First one and last one. Actually, I have had that designation for more than this 20 years. And that development passed all the muster, federal, state, and city. It wasn't a slam dunk. In fact, I resurrected the property at the time I secured that property. The city wanted to demolish it, and it did look that bad. Trust me, it did look that bad. But nevertheless, so there you go. City-issued licenses. Now, the very last one is the one issued by the state. Arbitrarily changed the wording, designation, and identity of that business, which means Means everything as far as operating it, to code. It means everything as far as transferring the business to another owner. And this needs to be addressed. It can be addressed in a motion and then through resolution, but it needs to be codified. That distinction of this business type needs to be codified in the city code. It's as simple as that. And with that, I'm gonna leave it up to you guys. Anybody has any questions?
Questions or comments from the council?
Could you detail some of the specific impacts of the change in the business license from mobile home to general business license?
What do you think? What, let's take any business- What, let's take any business in town. And the state arbitrarily changes its designation? What do you think that would mean?
So you don't have a specific example of how this may negatively impact you?
Absolutely not, this is brand-new stuff.
Okay, yeah.
This is brand-new stuff.
I would need specifics, and I'll be happy to do that.
You're gonna have to wait a while. There are no specifics. The state does not operate on specifics. The state operates in a vacuum, in a fact-free environment.
Well, that's not how I operate. I like to
It's not how I operate either.
...information and understand all the impacts on all sides.
Good luck.
So I'll need to do more research myself to learn more about it before making any decisions for myself.
So Steve, I have a question for you, this is for me. So we're looking at, this is the state license where it's changed the, you know, the general business. Does the city's business license show mobile park on it, or does it show general business?
I showed you
Or is this, is this the city's?
That is issued by the state.
Yeah. Okay, so how are we able to change what the state says on that? That's what you're asking us to do, correct?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, then I have this on the table, okay.
I'm asking you, as a legislative body of this city, to codify it. That's all. Take out the ambiguity. Clarify. And like I say, the state has a reason. And I don't like it. I do not trust the state. And you shouldn't either. Not when it comes to legislation, not when it comes to running your own city. You have authority to do a lot. And the state has nothing to say about it. And this is one of them, this is one of them. He wants clarification, I don't know how I could be any clearer.
Mayor, if I may? So, um, there was a few points brought up here. One of them, I think I can address quick, real quickly. Isn't it registration time for city council this week?
Yes, it is.
Well, I'm just throwing that out there for the gentlemen. More than welcome to have them step on in.
I'll consider that.
Well, I'm welcome, y'all buy your doughnuts.
I'll pass on the doughnuts. But thank you.
Any other comments? We'll take this, work through it, and try to find the answers that you're seeking.
Well, I thoroughly expect some action. And, and some resolve here. And like I say, I don't see where it could be any clearer. You have the right, kind of jurisdiction, and the authority to codify this for these types of businesses. And if they've done it, if they've arbitrarily done this to this type of business, be prepared, be prepared. This is about revenue and control. They are trying to take as much control away from the municipalities as they can. And this is just the start. So pay attention, trust me on this. They want to, the socialist regime in this state would just as soon see these bodies as obsolete. They've already made you, what was the key word we just put up with for a year? Essential, non-essential. Think about it. If you take this job seriously, and you should, think about it. Because it's time to take a stand. Thank you. I'll be in touch.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, department reports. We'll hear first from our chief of police. Jay Hanziker, checking?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have too much night. Social service results came in for testing for the position we have opening. Hopefully, I'll get the list either by tomorrow or Wednesday, according to the examiner. As soon as I do get a list, I will start the process of trying to fill that gap that Mark Scott left us in. Not too long ago, we were invited to KVH for a tour of a safe room that they want to develop there up at the hospital for people that are in crisis. If we have somebody that is having a mental health crisis, and we take them into safe custody, sometimes they can be very competitive. So they've developed a plan to turn one of their rooms into a safe room to where there's not expensive equipment in there. It's not a padded room, but it's a room to where they can't hurt themselves or pull anything off the walls. And the people in the emergency room where we normally take them are safe, the medical staff is safe. And it's a good thing, it's something that is definitely needed. And I'm happy to see that they're taking the full steps to do it. They asked law enforcement to come down, the sheriff was also there, along with my officers and other staff, and asked for our input. And they showed us the room and said, "Any ideas?" They are going for it, and they're hoping to have this up running by August. But when it is up and running, it's gonna be a big help for law enforcement out on the street because we deal a lot with the mental health problems on the street. So this is a good thing. So it's safety for the patient, the officer, medical staff, any other patients up there, so this is good. So I'm real happy to see it. Other than that, police department is running smoothly. We're not having any major issues.
Thanks, Jerry.
Go home. Party.
Thanks, Mayor. So I just wanted to remind everybody, the burn ban is in effect. It went into effect on the 15th. That coincides with county burn ban in Zone 2. I believe Zone 1 is already in effect, and 3 is, I'm not 100% sure. But we're in Zone 2, but, so we are in our burn ban. Obviously, dry weather, they had a pretty good fire on the east end of the county yesterday. So it's coming, it's drying up, so.
Yeah, very dry.
That's all I have.
Do you have any advice for people on day-to-day things in their own property as far as what to make sure we don't do?
There's lots of stuff, but, you know, living out here, maybe not necessarily in the city limits. I mean, it's still gonna happen, is, you know, keep your trees pretty high, your grass mowed down, and that kind of stuff, so it doesn't get into your house. If a fire starts, it doesn't get into your house or something like that, or up into trees and stuff like that, so.
Thanks. Everybody needs to be very, very cautious in this tight season, as dry as it is. Next item on the agenda, if council business, there's not council business or resolutions tonight, but we'll go to ordinances, and the first one has to do with the second reading of the RRR rezone, and Larry Bellamy will present that.
This is the last step in the process regarding the request for rezone by Triple R Development. And the first reading was accepted at last council meeting, and no changes have been made by the council or by the staff. And it is ready for adoption. And final adoption to the property that they, six lots of them have adopted. So it's ready for adoption by the council.
No changes made whatsoever, so.
No changes made.
Council, any comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Somebody? I'm in the motion to approve a second reading and adopt the RRR rezone in 20-01, ordinance 5007.
In the second.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and segmented to adopt ordinance number 1507. A map zone, map slash zone change for RRR Development LLC rezone 20-01, and waive the second reading. In favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item has to do with the moratorium on ground-mounted solar arrays. We've had some comments on the term ground-mounted solar arrays. It's more the larger industrial-type solar farms, but we'll turn this over to Larry to present.
Okay, we have had some inquiries, like it indicates in the ordinance, that we've had some inquiries about regulations governing the siting and construction of ground-mounted solar arrays. And residents of the city have expressed interest in siting this aid. The city does not have any code or regulation that addresses this. And in consultation with our attorney, he felt like the moratorium would be the best approach to this. So it would allow the city to take some time and develop any regulations about potentials for ground-mounted solar arrays inside the city limits. It's not outside, it doesn't really have anything to, any connection with what's going on in the county. This is strictly just related to the situation here in the city. And basically, this ordinance is allowing for us to take a six-month period of time to develop any regulations that we think are necessary for our town with regard to the siting of ground-mounted solar arrays. And it does, it already sets a public hearing for this matter to be held on June 21st in 2021. You can change that if you'd like, but the 21st of June gives us a little bit of time to address the issues, and give people an opportunity to weigh in on those issues and have testimony at a public hearing. So there's, we would recommend that the council adopt this moratorium and waive the second reading, so that we can take some time to look at any kind of regulations we think are appropriate for our town. Could be, could be nothing, it could be a detailed solar array plan, but we might want to think about what it means zoning-wise in zoning code. Does that make sense?
Sir, could you define exactly what a ground-mounted solar array would be? Does this involve like roof-mounted or specifically?
Well, I don't believe it addresses roof-mounted, because that's not, because it's pretty clear that it's ground-mounted. I guess it would just have to be a solar array attached to the ground. But that is precisely, one of the things that we want to make sure we address in the code, is what is the definition of the ground-mounted solar array? That gives us some time to develop what that definition is and get some feedback from MRC, from various other cities and counties that have had a chance to maybe already adopt some regulations. But the definition is something that would be discussed in the public hearing and further.
Do we have any current applications for anything solar?
We just have an
Right, okay, but not an actual application?
There is no actual application.
Now, there's a lot of discussion on the county's side.
Yeah, yeah.
Several are planned or proposed in the county, and I think it's kind of bleeding over into communities as well.
I'm just wondering if we have, more than just that, if somebody's actually have plans to build, or if it's just pretty empty.
Is there any requirement to submit an application to build it at this point?
That's a good question.
Yeah, because, I mean, from what I understood, the individual definitely wants to move forward with it. It's small scale, put in the backyard. They're looking at mounting it on the roof because of the neighbor's trees. They can't mount it on the roof to get a lot more sun out of the yard, and it's actually less intrusive. So I talked to about a dozen people around town, including the individual that's interested in doing this, and five or six people on the block where it's gonna be sited. And I didn't find any opposition to it at all whatsoever, even support. I talked to other community members in general, and their sense was, you know, regulating what happens in someone's backyard is just way too much. And, you know, maybe if we're looking at 60-foot structures, that would be a different story, but that's not the case. In this particular case, I think it was sited 20-foot wide by 10-foot tall, so a little taller than a fence.
Say that again, 20-foot?
20-foot wide by 10-foot tall was the estimate.
Kevin has his handle.
But like I said, the most feedback I got was just, you know, government overreach, which we already heard about from these children when you were earlier. So I think just over-regulating what people do in their private property and in their backyards is a concern unless there's a safety hazard, in my opinion. And that's the feedback I got from the community as well. You know, not that they're all sort of a hundred dozen folks, half of which were within seven-day houses of that individual, so.
This afternoon, I sent a packet to each council member. It has a Seattle Times article in it, fairly long in detail, but also Wikipedia information on the whole issue of solar power. And this term, ground-mounted, is not the accurate term for more of the industrial approach to solar farms, but hopefully it will help with understanding what else is going on here. But we, as far as on the city property, I don't think there'd ever be enough space for anything like what they're talking about at the county. But there are five of them on the, need to thought about.
Was it last year, the year before? City was looking at solar power for the city as well, for facilities. I mean, it's definitely something that worth doing, right? So I know, like, council was for that, and we had a whole study done to see what it could be. Would it be, and I totally get what you're saying, Lauren, about the government overreach. Definitely don't like people controlling what I do in my backyard, right? Would it be fair to modify this to include the words for commercial purpose business and not for backyard presidential? So that, you know, if it's somewhat, something small, presidential, I would hate to not promote green energy, right? And if the homeowner in this case that has the questions can't do it on his rooftop, but he still wants to contribute to that. And, I mean, save a lot of money in the long run, too.
Is there something maybe kind of going on with these things? Something, instead of the moratorium, maybe pick this to the ordinance committee to have them go over it? Because it doesn't sound like it's commercial. Because it doesn't sound like it's commercial. If it was something commercial, I'm going to go though with solar, I'd be a little more nervous, but I'm a little worried on that too, telling someone what they can and can't do in their own backyard. I agree with that. I mean, I don't want to see everyone's backyard turned to solar farms, but at the same time, I do agree with, we got to watch what we, what they can't do with the property. At what's the point of owning property if you can't do it? You want to do one of your property, so.
Well, I was going to make a comment on it too. So it'd be for the ordinance committee to be, now would we do it after the hearing or prior to the hearing?
Well, if I'm hearing Andy correctly and Bill correctly, they're suggesting not to approve the moratorium, but to establish the ordinance committee to review it. You can do both if you wanted to, but then you would have a chance to have, you know, testimony at the public hearing. If you want testimony at the public hearing, this would set it up for June 21st and then it would be for the entire council. And then you would refer it to the ordinance committee. But I think what they're saying is, let's just refer it to the ordinance committee.
That's kind of my idea. And of course invite people if they want to speak their opinion on it too. I mean, it would be.
It was a public meeting.
Well, and I'm okay with ordinance committee. If it's for commercial purposes and business, again, I'm not sure how much of an ordinance we need to regulate what people do in their home. Otherwise, we would have the city or Fulton D.O.A. And I'm definitely, I think we got plenty of that with other agencies along with the board. Yeah, I mean, a couple panels to provide energy to your own home, okay? You're going to build a whole wind or solar farm on your backyard and, you know, that's, that's a definition.
May I type in real quick?
Yes, Kevin.
So I'm kind of stuck here. This gentleman lives close to me. He's in my neighborhood. I don't want to say whether I'm forward or against it because I don't know if that's breaking any rules. But I guess my question is, does this gentleman, one of our citizens, have a timeframe where he cannot get tax benefits based in the state of Washington or from the federal government for building it? And are we going to be messing with this gentleman while we wait? I was wondering if we could just do a grandfather clause and put a moratorium on the rest of them. As Larry suggested, we could do both. That's, that's my thought process on this. I don't want to mess with one of our citizens.
I don't know about the financials for this particular individual, but I did look into it over the weekend and the federal government has extended a tax program that actually provides quite a bit of tax incentive. But that's being phased out, so if it's not completed in 2021, I think it's a four, six percent reduction in the amount of tax benefit. It's still not, still a considerable cost to an individual landowner, but it's enough incentive to, you know, inspire some people to do this. So I, I would, I would suggest that a moratorium isn't needed at all, but you know, it can't hurt at all to get the ordinance committee together and talk about it and maybe think about long-term, you know, utility scale versus residential and, you know, that's what I think.
Does, does the state regulate how much power they can sell back to D U D?
I'm not aware of any.
I know, I know where, where I lived before, there was regulation on how much, how many homes can have solar, how many homes can sell back to the few, to the utility companies? And that's because it took money away from the utility companies. And so they didn't like that. So they put a cap on, on to like that. I definitely don't want to do that. Encourage people to use less energy from less healthy sources.
Yes, definitely. I mean, green energy is strongly supported nationally, federally, state. I don't know, the local opposition might be in a strange position.
Yeah, yeah.
But one comment I'd like to make, when we do ordinance, you know, I think we should try to get the much true facts on solar energy. Sometimes some facts get exaggerated or some false information has been given out. But I think that's our goal is to, for the city and for the ordinance committee to be sure we get the true facts on, on what we're talking about here, so.
I think that's a good approach. It needs to be studied. It's not, it's not action taken at this point.
The problem with that one is what they buy. Per solar panel, I think it goes anywhere from 250 kilowatts a year to 600 kilowatts a year. And that's not even including how much sun we get. And an average sundae should be, peak sundae should be about five hours. We may not get that much. So there, there's a lot of little, any big things that go into this. It's not an easy subject. Extremely complicated. It actually made me go back to my Navy training and I forgot what P equals I E meant. Had to look that up. But I'm still worried that this gentleman might lose out on money, including E S S S B five nine three nine, I think it was, from the state of Washington and the federal subsidies. And that is a concern of mine. I think that was the number, but I messed one number up which I, this week, which I do apologize for.
Kevin, and I, I would agree that if we did, if we took any action against them, it really punished us on for entering on something that we don't have currently. So we're trying to do the right thing. Here's your punishment, it's not appropriate either, so.
So we table this or just send this to the ordinance committee?
It's up to you, but either one is fine. The ordinance committee, if you refer to the ordinance committee, then they just have to take action or get the information and do your research and hold a public. If you want to hold a public hearing, we can do that kind of a process.
Make a motion that we refer to the ordinance committee to evaluate it, do some study on it and bring back any potential concerns or considerations or need for ordinance.
A second, Pat. It's been moved and seconded to refer the ordinance number one five oh eight regarding solar arrays and the future of that industry to the ordinance committee for study and for recommendations to the city council. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, one last comment. As an environmental scientist with 20 years background in electronics, I'm not asking to be on the ordinance committee, but I am asking to have an input to them if the ordinance committee will permit it. Thank you.
The committee itself is three people, but you're always able to attend and make those comments. You would be considered a very, yes.
Make a quorum.
The committee is three, but the thing is to have a technical advice that he would offer, I think, would be helpful to that committee, even if it's just in emails and discussions. I don't think you have to be on the committee, but I think your advice would be helpful.
I just said, I don't think you can be here with them.
No, no, but he could give a good advice.
Yeah.
For environmental background.
Connie, we both know I can't be with them right now.
Well, you could be on here. I'd have to, I'd have to mute you out.
I agree.
Thanks for bringing that forward, Larry. It has some good background information.
It's important to have it.
Can we go on yet?
Yeah, we're going to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, here.
It's been moved and seconded to refer this to the ordinance committee for further study and action. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is report of officers and city administrator. I will begin with Larry Bellamy and his report.
And first thing I'd like to report on is the financial statements. I have a summary review of those in the first page after the agenda bill, Larry Bellamy's report. Couple of things of note with regard, with regard to the revenue picture. But before I mention that, the operative percentage we're looking at comparing is, using for these statements is thirty-three and third percent. So they, these statements that I'm making are related to the April figures as of April 30th, so four months and again, it's a third of the year has gone by. So on the first page under revenue, retail sales, you can see that the percentage is forty-seven percent versus three percent, which would be more normal. Thirty-three percent is more normal, so we're looking a little bit better on the retail sales. It would appear that this is most likely due to the construct, large construction project of the Clicktech County Administrative Services Building. Otherwise, everything else looks pretty decent on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, there's a couple of things of note. Again, these are the various departments in the general fund. First, first half of the graph is the various departments of the current expense fund. So one item of note is that legal services is at seventy-seven percent versus the normal thirty-three percent, but most of that is because of the carryover of the finalization of the municipal employee contract. And then I just want to make sure you understood that the total current expense fund does not include the capitalizes. This is more of an O and M type report. Otherwise, everything else looks pretty decent. Then I wanted to run for the, I wanted to review for the full council, the public works, summary of the public works committee meeting. The first item that we addressed was the additional ADA parking. And if you'll look on the map immediately following the financial statements, you'll see that we had the existing ADA ramps noted as A, B, C, D, E, F, and G and H. And the committee decided to add to eliminate one, which is A, which is down by the county office building to public works and the health department and building and planning.
Go ahead. The parking lot with the experience department, you mentioned that's correct.
And that's in part, as Lauren indicated to me, that's in part due to the fact that that will eventually be a parking lot for the county, for county purposes and have its own ADA parking, as well as other parking areas. Like for instance, the two buildings, there's going to be two buildings that are west of the major administration building that will be torn down. Little Clark's moral is what I always remember, sorry. And then the economic development department and solid waste department, those, those buildings will go away and they'll become parking lots and they will also have ADA ramps as well in parking spaces. And so then, as far as the ones we're going to add, the request was to try to build more ADA parking around the Casey Pharmacy business. It felt like a lot of people that need to utilize that business would also need additional ADA parking spaces. So we added one next to the ADA ramp labeled E, D, then on the corner by Casey Pharmacy on the west side of North Columbus, an additional parking space for ADA, ADA use as well. We talked about a proposed agreement with Stillwater Ministries about sharing half of the cost of the Simcoe Drive sewer project crossing and referred that to our attorney for a draft of an agreement and to Dustin for, to develop the cost estimates. I have received the draft from the attorney, but I have not yet received the cost estimate from Dustin. I will review that when I receive, when I receive it. Then three and four, we just briefly discussed the possibility of no parking on West End of Broadway, but referred that to get, gather more information from the city codes, the traffic safety committee and more information from Washington State Department of Transportation. Finally, we had the results of our investigation of our sewer connections on the, in the alley north of the county, new county building. It was determined that the concern area is concentrated where there will be three sewer connections that converge pretty close to one another on that, in that alley. That include the Clicktech County Administrative Services Building, Compris, and Benelout, and Hot Rods. So we plan to start with that project tomorrow to expose those sewer lines and the sewer taps in the main to make sure we've got a good connection all the way around. Hopefully we'll invent further backups in the future. So that covers that. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. I'll go to council, we'll start with Andy Hall. I don't have anything. Michael Walling.
Uh, Mayor, I just maybe want to report on the airport sometime when the crew might be out there and load the grass down. You know, the DNR may be bringing some of their ships in one of these days.
You should be pretty close.
Yeah, right. When I say ships, I mean helicopters, but that's the old, old saying.
Always showing your age.
Yeah. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Lauren?
Um, I guess just thinking about Steve comments earlier about appointed versus elected council members. I've talked to a number of people just trying to encourage involvement and it is really difficult to encourage anyone to, to be involved. And so I think the mayor and Larry and the entire council should think about what we need to do to recruit folks because we may end up in the same situation with a lot of Mike Mitz and maybe no one running for council. So there's work to do there.
I, I don't agree at all with the criticism that Mr. Johnston put towards people who were willing to be appointed to serve because there's always a need to have as full as a council as you're going to have. Because your, your role is very important in the government of this, governing of this particular city.
I don't agree with Mr. Johnson when he makes a comment that we don't have to do what the legislator tells us. If legislator's passed the bill, you have to go by that. There's no way of getting around that.
Kevin, remarks, comments?
Um, my only remark was I hate proving myself wrong. And Mr. Quinn proved me wrong. I brought up a couple of issues and one of the issues I was incorrect on and I do apologize for that. That's it. I'm acknowledging that I made a mistake.
Let's be fair, he also caught one that you caught. He, you caught one of his mistakes too.
Well, yes. So we've normalized ourselves.
You're even.
Yes.
If I may, we also, I would like to have a budget committee meeting because I'd like to review the first quarter of financial statements with you. But I was hoping to have it on May 24th, which is next Monday at 7:00 PM.
I will be there.
If you're not going to be able to be there, then you'll have to re, relook at that with any appointment because at the moment, you are the only one over budget.
Oh, nice.
The other two are Shannon Middleton. The other two are Shannon Middleton and Julie Buck.
We just need to appoint some more people and more.
Can you do soon?
I'll be in Portland doing my second job Monday, so.
We will, I'll get together with you and find a new one.
Okay, sounds good.
Phil, did you have?
Yeah, actually, I do. Have a couple of things. First, yes, I totally agree. I am thankful for everybody that's been appointed, that's been willing to volunteer. I don't believe any of the positions where we had appointments, including when I started, there were multiple people wanting the position. I think it was one individual, and those that were appointed may probably regret submitting their names now, you know? But, they submitted their name and they got tied in for it. So, I'm grateful for those willing to participate and get involved. One of my, one of the things I always say is, you can complain, you can protest, you can do all you want, but until you get involved with an actual body that causes change.
That's it.
You're not doing anything. Right? So, I would encourage everybody, and I would really like to see some younger people. I used to think I was young at one day, but everything hurts and creeps now.
And you saw it now.
Everything hurts and creeps now, so, I'm not that young, but I would love to see some younger people and encourage them to come to council and put it on their resume. It would be a really good packing of their resume for candidates and other jobs, so. The other thing, on appointments, Julie Buck, I believe, was one of the appointments.
Right.
And I was shocked to hear the news that she will be leaving us. I don't think, I don't think many people will have an idea of how much perspective and knowledge she brought to this town and to this county, both working with her and for her, and also on council. A lot of knowledge, a lot of experience she brought to our 911 center. I know she, I don't know if she shared with council or not, but she was the supervisor on the floor in the shooting in Colorado, in her home state. That was a movie theater shooting. A lot of experience that she brought to that center, and, yeah, it was a shock, but I want to thank her for it, and I want to thank her for willing to put up with us and put in her name in the hat for appointment, right?
And that just once or twice.
Twice, yes, yes. And Andy got to work with Judy, too, so. So, and then, the other question I just had, going back to some business, is if maybe we want to, I don't know whatever happened with the discussion of the flowers around Goldendale. I know there was some discussion with how much hours it takes to water the plants, and maybe we can bring that discussion back into turning that into a more permanent displays. I know right now, we have banners with all our seniors. My kids' pictures up there, and it's great. It shows community pride. I think it shows more community pride than the flowers. And my kid's eighteen, so I'm done watering him. Nobody needs to water that no more. So, making, maybe bringing that topic back and looking at some permanent solutions, maybe some banners that show community pride and things like that would be more permanent, and then, we can reappropriate that employee and all those hours back to Public Works and maybe look at the main ends of the baseball fields and other facilities around, especially now that we can congregate and play ball.
That's true. Good point.
Mayor, I think that this is a good topic for our budget committee to review.
Right.
But with Andy being the only one on the budget committee, maybe we need to see if there's at least one more body during this interim time period to participate in the budget meeting and actually deal with at least, especially what you just talked about and other budget items that are of importance to us. So, I don't know if there's anybody that's, it's really a council decision as far as the.
I would nominate Mylan, who's very well experienced.
Oh, nice. Well, Mylan would be.
I, but I'm with my head of nobody else.
I think I'm on three right now. Or am I? I'm unordained.
No, you're just unordained, so you're the one.
Oh, okay. No, I'm also on the.
Well, you just added your name to Public Works Committee, that's true.
Right, right.
But we're also down two council members, so.
I was kidding, Mayor. But I'll put my name for the budget if Mylan doesn't want to do it. Or we'll meet together.
Yeah, well, we'll decide. Yeah, well, actually, I think you feel to do a good job.
Okay.
Larry's crying now.
This is the budget corner over here.
Yeah, right.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Okay, so you, Andy, you and Phil then, at the very least, can be on the budget. Unless there's somebody else that really is working.
I'm okay with these two gentlemen.
So, I'll work with you about a date that we can meet.
Okay. We're good for spending money, so.
Hopefully with restraint. On the mayor's comments, the thing I want to talk about for just a couple of minutes is a situation that was raised as far as city councilmen that were appointed. It's necessary for Mylan, Lauren, and Kevin to file, to be on the ballot, to finish out the terms that they were appointed to. For Andy and for Phil, you're elected, you're in place, you don't have to worry about that. But Mylan, Lauren, Kevin, and it would have been Judy as well, need to go ahead and file this week. As far as we know, the election is in November, still a long time away, but I want to get that out of the way.
I have filed already.
Okay, good, good.
If you guys forget, I think we can write their name in.
It doesn't always work well. But I also want to explain something to, with the criticism that we got with appointing city council members. The people who put their names in and explained why they would like to be on city council felt they were qualified. Every one of those individuals were vetted by the council, questions were given, interviews were held, and this was quite a detailed process. This isn't just a, okay, you can do it. It's not that way. It's searching out quality candidates, and we appreciate every one of you. Volitionism is always a lot harder than getting hired for a job, and you've done great, all of you. I appreciate it very much. That was the only thing I had on the mayor's side.
Kevin just said thank you.
What did he say?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, Kevin. Just make sure you file if you're gonna run again or going to complete that term. The next item on the agenda is public comment. If you could, if you have public comments, please limit to three minutes. Yes, please.
My name's Kay Garner Schmidt, and I don't know if I understood right. Did you vote for yes for the new handicap spot in front of the pharmacy?
Yes.
I would say we relocated one to in front of the pharmacy, and we added two more in the middle of the block.
Okay, so the one you relocated is down by the Health Department.
Right.
And then, the other two are the ones in front of the old medical building and in front of the Simcoe.
At the crosswalk, at the crosswalk.
At the crosswalk, okay.
And the thought is that the Health Department is gonna be, the New County Services Building soon, and so, having additional handicap parking over there.
Right, in the parking lot. So, the pharmacy will have one then.
But it'll have two additional within, I don't know.
Short distance.
On that side of the street.
Right, right, okay, all right. Because I didn't hear a vote, yea or nay on it, and so, that's the reason why I'm asking.
I don't think we had the vote on it, did we? We just, we're just, we're gonna do it.
Which is, that's the direction of the council and the Public Works Department.
And I was here last week for that, so.
That was, that was it.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
We appreciate that you brought that issue up, too, which we might not have ever noticed.
I know a lot of people that, I didn't notice it either, until I needed it, so, but, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Glad you're here. Anyone else for public comment? Does it look like it? Then we'll go now to, to the events committee meeting, and we will open that at this time. City council is still moving. If you don't, are not a part of the events committee and don't feel you want to stay for that, you can leave, but that's what we'll be discussing from here on out, is the events committee. Larry, you're gonna, I think, lead that discussion.
Correct. Anybody that's interested, I've kind of written up a few agenda items. I'll leave them up here. If you guys are here, I'll give you one.
They're all correct. Oh, yeah, I'll listen.
Okay, we decided that, or I suggested to the mayor that we try to finalize community day activities. We've had them in quite a year this year so far, even from last year as well, and things are coming back around. It looks like things are gonna be happening in, by June 30 in our state as far as going back to normal to a certain degree. Let's see, I was gonna, forgot to do that, and now I don't know that I have it. Well, anyway, after all that paperwork, I guess I didn't pick up the right issue, but basically, the governor has indicated that things are gonna be pretty much back to normal by June 30, with the exception of large groups, like, or crowded places, like buses, arenas and things like that. There still may be some restrictions related to that. But they're also pushing a lot of the vaccinations, and they're indicating that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. So, things are kind of in a state of flux, and they're getting better all the time, it appears. But anyway, the purpose of this meeting is to come to a decision on what activities we're gonna have on community days. So, the first thing I'd like to mention is that community day is gonna be on Saturday, July 10. We do not have at the moment anything planned for Friday evening, nor do we have anything planned for Sunday afternoon, Sunday morning or afternoon. The two items, the two things that we felt we could do, given the recent direction that we had received from the governor's office, was that we would have a parade and we would have the GMA Car Show. So, here are some of the particulars on the parade, and then we'll stop and take comments on the parade portion. But we, in the past, the junior chamber has organized the start of the, the starting of the parade on Schuster Street, and they have also coordinated, helped pick up the barricades afterwards. The parade starts at 11:00. Any of these facts can be discussed or changed if it's not what you recall. The route, of course, is Schuster, Simcoe, Columbus, and East Court, and parade applications would be available from the junior chamber, the city, and the Chamber of Commerce, and then they would also be available at the site. The city police and fire would assist with parade control. Does that fit with what most people understand, and can we kind of go with that?
I have a question.
Nicole.
We, as a chamber, we don't have any contact information for anybody at the junior chamber, so not knowing who they are and how, you know, so we can direct people.
Is Elena James on the line?
Yep.
Elena James.
Oh, okay.
I am on the line, and yes, Nicole and I are quite familiar. Nicole, if you don't have my phone number, it hasn't changed in the last 25 years, so you can definitely reach me at the phone number that you have. Happy to update those records for you as we need. We can always be reached at goldendalejpc@gma.com.
Okay.
And my team and I are extremely excited about the prospect of community days occurring this year. We do have some questions, some insights, some requests, some hopes and dreams, so definitely want to knock those around the field a little bit.
Great, Elena, I did not know you were still involved. I'm so, last I heard, last, I think you said that you weren't going to be, and that's why I was concerned, I didn't know who was, who was taking this on. Thank you.
So, Elena, does that, does that, does my description fall within your understanding of the parade?
Well, I, with the parade, yes. With the rest of the function of community days, I have some questions, and I've been doing a lot of research. My professional life takes me into a world of appliance, and so, I'm quite familiar with the current roadback recovery phases that Clicktack County is in, and enforcement and the guidelines regarding events and gatherings and such. And it is my hope that even if we, you know, the worst thing were to happen and we were still in phase three come July 10th, that we would actually still be able to have a gathering, we would be able to host some live music and fully entertain the community to welcome everybody back into being human.
Okay, so, we'll get back to you in a minute. I was gonna, so I wanted to just finalize the things that I mentioned about the parade. The junior chamber is willing, I assume, is still on board to organize it on, at the gathering place on Schuster, is that correct?
We would like, we would definitely love to host the parade. Our scholarship fund was extremely depleted because we did not stop giving scholarships during 2020, even though we didn't, we weren't able to host any fundraisers. So, we would definitely like to discuss our involvement to also include some type of fundraiser for our scholarship fund as well.
So, is that like a fee to the people that make application to be in the parade? Is that what you're suggesting, or?
No, I would still like to see the parade be a free entry. We take donations for the parade entry that go into the scholarship fund, but definitely don't want a charge of fee to get into the parade or to join the parade as a community event, more in line with being able to host the community on the lawn or wherever community days festivities are going to occur this year.
Okay. Is there anybody else that has any comments or other understandings of the parade, the time, the route, anything like that?
So, are you gonna go down Main Street?
The plan is to go, start at Schuster, turn right on Simcoe, turn right on Columbus, turn right on East Court.
And that's it?
There's more to my thinking.
That's the traditional parade route, yes, for Goldendale.
That's what they've requested in the past. And that's, it's, it's a better route to go that direction to get back to your vehicles or whatever you might have left at the Schuster Street starting point. And it's also, Court Street is much wider, and we're also talking about using East 100 block of Main for another purpose. And we're also talking about using the east 100 block of Main for another purpose. If the parade were also held there, held there, it would conflict with that potential. Okay, so Elena, in years past, it has been as early as 10, but we're suggesting 11. Does that work out all right with you?
11 works great for our schedule, yes.
All right, well, if there's no more discussion on, on anything to do with the parade, we'll just go ahead with that.
Um, Larry, I'm still on, and if you need, I'd like to talk. The, is there any way we can invite the local Portland news and Seattle Portland news to come out and cover our parade and our car show to give us? It may not help this year, but it may help next year for a larger attendance and help our businesses out more?
Well, we've never done that before, so I don't know the answer to that. I do know that there is, the local radio stations have been involved, keenly involved with this in the past, as has the Goldendale Sentinel, has been involved in various ways as well. So we get good local coverage. I don't know that we have that much interest from the Portland and Seattle people, but we at least do get interest from the DOWs. Through the, which we'll talk about this next, through the GMA Car Show, we get a lot of entries from outside of Goldendale. And that's actually been our best user of lodging tech, the lodges, the lodging that's available in our community. We have a lot of the...
I completely understand that, but, you know, I spent 12 years in Whibley Island. I never knew Goldendale had an observatory. And if we can get, if we can get coverage on either Seattle or Portland, that would expand us for the next year even further and maybe even in the summertime, because we do have a lovely quaint little town with a bunch of wonderful people, more than excluded. We've got, I'm just saying, a phone call or an email, it could hurt, and I'll leave you at that.
Well, any comments you guys want to make in that regard?
Sure, sure. Certainly, we've done a lot of outreach around, around Community Days, but it has been local. Kevin, this is Nicole Lund Dean. I'm the interim exec director at the Chamber. And, but this year in 2021, this really is our first opportunity to publicize the renovated Goldendale Observatory State Park. And so that is really our main goal for advertising, because it brings in over 10,000 people a year. We think more this year, once they're open on regular hours. So, we have a lot of plans and we're just getting started again, and so...
We have a marketing plan that will go for those coverages in the cities. And we have that outlined and structured, and we've been taking action, but we've just got our funding in place.
Barely.
To start doing that and to try to meet deadlines, because we're starting, you know, here we are sitting in May and everything's been behind. So, right now, we're, we're going forward with action that's going to end up being publicized. Focus is gonna be so that those neighboring states and cities that we have will know that the observatory is here.
Right, we're gonna...
So it's a big deal. The observatory just won two major awards for the architecture of the building, and so there's some real, real focus points that we have that we can really spotlight Goldendale.
Right, and one of them...
And that's our focus.
Yeah, one of them is the Washington State Tourism Alliance. So we'll be advertising the Goldendale Observatory there. So we've already, we have, that's on our list.
Well, that, that sounds fantastic, but I'm just thinking if we get a free newscast and three Felicity, we're gonna drive out one day and see our car show or our parade and...
Washington State Tourism Alliance was here the week, last weekend, weekend before. They did drone footage on Maryhill Loops. They had, who was it? Mantle, Mantle Powers. They had, they asked him to bring his car. He drove up the loops. They had a couple of models. And they did drone footage all down the loops. It was pretty remarkable, and that is gonna be publicized statewide. So, it's, it's, it's starting to ramp right up, and we're certainly willing to try and get Seattle, Portland press here. I don't know how easy it'll be, but we'll give it a shot.
I agree with you. It's not gonna be easy, but I would like to thank you for your open work. And I, I, I for one appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, off the parade and onto the GMA Car Show.
Dennis, give me a big favorite and sit at that table, would you?
She wants to, she wants to get you.
And when you sit there, you might be the next.
You can move Jay Stein around a little bit.
Dennis is GMA Group, has, has been a longtime supporter of the car, Community Days and car shows in general. We really appreciate the hard work that they, they present to us. So I don't have that much that needs to be clarified, but I just thought I'd bring these points out. If there are others, feel free to go for it. But I assume that under the advertising, that GMA would do their own poster, that the Chamber would do a schedule of events on their website, and that the, there would, the Chamber would also coordinate the advertising with the Sentinel for the actual activities that are, that are going on that day. And then the porta potties would be a couple, two or three, I don't know what you've done in the past, but you would be responsible for that on the west end of the 100 block of, or west end of Main Street.
Yeah, we typically do two of those. They, I, I actually instructed them to put both of them at the, at the Umpire Bank parking lot.
Perfect.
In the wash station. So we have that set there. I didn't know anything about the 100 block East Main going on.
Well, you had actually suggested we leave things open, so we're gonna have a discussion about that afterwards.
Appreciate you taking note of that. So yeah, so we, we did, we figured the porta potties and then usually the rest of Community Days activity has other porta potties out and about. So, so I just covered what we use for the car show. And we, we are working on advertising. We got a couple of people working with Facebook and there was one other outlet on the internet that I forgot the name of it, because I don't really follow that stuff that close, but I got a couple of people working on it. We already ran ads early in the year for Northwest Car Club Council. So we put car show advertising on that already, just rolling the dice, because that's kind of what we had to do that time of year to get in on that. And then we'll be working on other advertising. And then, I did have a couple of questions as far as, we had talked about the FFA kids helping at the car show.
Yes.
And I've met with Josh Creed on that already, and they're, they were on board to do it last year. And then, of course, we, you know, everything got canceled. So they're anxious to do it this year and, and kind of be a big, big part of that, so...
And you did appropriate the money for that?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that that got, that got handled.
I believe it was for both car shows.
Okay.
It was a thousand dollars, right?
Right.
Five hundred for each show?
Yeah, for, for the town as well as for, according to Maryhill, it was 500 on each one, I believe.
I believe that was correct.
Well, that kind of doesn't coincide with our plan, but we told them all along that it was 1,000 for Community Days. That's where we need the main help, but...
Okay, that'd be fine.
Anyway.
That's all right.
They do great service. We appreciate what they do.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Just make sure you tell them that they work through the school. I assume that I have to work through and pay the school district directly on their behalf, correct?
Well, I just know that you have certain tourism regulations you have to meet.
Correct.
Statewide, so I just want to make sure that you had a plan for that. You would either have to pay us and then we would donate it to them, or you can go directly to the school.
I'd rather go directly to the school.
What's that?
I'd rather go directly to the school. They have an invoice, I'm familiar with their invoice procedures. And then they can just send us an invoice and we'll pay them directly.
Yeah, well, that's, that, that's fine. I just knew we needed to meet whatever laws oversee that. So as long as it's handled and they get the funding, that's all clear.
The main thing is, the main thing on the state laws is you don't want to just give the money to them. You have to ask for, there has to be some service provided for that remuneration. So that's why them working and helping out at the car show is the service that they provide. And then we have to note that in the invoice, and we should meet all the state requirements in that respect.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it works out on the near end, that's fine. And then, of course, we will be needing the street sweeper.
Okay, I better mark that down. That's on Friday or on Thursday, right?
Well, yeah, the nearest day that you have, closest day you have to that weekend, I think, because he has a schedule he had to work around, if I remember right.
Yes, I do.
So yeah, that's always a huge help, because otherwise it's a little bit, it can get a little bit messy. And then, and then, of course, barricades will be put out also.
You had the barricade plan in place.
Yeah, so...
As long as it worked well last year, we'll just do the same thing.
Yeah, it worked, worked fine. I hadn't seen any official permit yet.
Okay, I'll follow up on that as well, because I think you've already submitted it.
Yes, yeah, already submitted that, and so we should be getting 100, 200 block of West Main and 100 block south, north and south Grant. Yeah, and then, so anyway, so yeah, we, we have that. And the poster we're working on, that's in progress now. And tell me about, I was thinking of trying to invite some of the food vendors that we had worked with. And I, what I see here, you have on the activities of 100 block of Main, is that, is that right?
What, East Main?
Uh, or, excuse me, East Main. So do I need to get food vendors or what I, what I can find?
I was thinking, I was thinking that the city and the Chamber, we work together to get those, to fill that area.
Okay.
Block of East Main.
And the end result is gonna be practically all of Community Days will be right down Main Street or through the side streets. I think people will like it that way. We hope they will. We will be using the courthouse lawn mostly because of all the construction and uncertainty there.
Right, yeah, I mean, that, that, that sounds like a good plan. Anyway, yeah, it was just important to us because, regarding the food vendors, because we always get people to show up with their cars early and then after they get parked, next thing they're looking for is coffee and donuts and breakfast food and whatever, so... So I would, I need to make sure that we have, we have that covered, basically, so...
Well, the city has a list of food vendors, and they have a list of the non-profit vendors. They have a list of other retail type vendors. And Diets working closely with the merchants on 100 block of East Main. And then working on the layout of how it would, how the food vendors would be stationed and any other vendors that might be wanting to come. And then we need to also talk about Saturday market, see if they would be interested in that as well. There's no shade in...
But the Chamber does have some tents and, and commercial tents in that. And Dennis, on the west end on, with the restaurants, because you do have Top Hat and Simcoe and that going, that we, I'll meet with them to also suggest that they might want to do breakfast during that time, so that we can load the whole Main Street. And that would be vital for all businesses down there, plus the show and shine.
Yeah, well, I wasn't sure who was surviving in the, on Main Street for the restaurants, of course, but...
Go patron them.
What's that?
Go patron them and you'll see who's down there.
But, I mean, I, I, I'm in agreement with the plan. I mean, as far as, as, I figured there would be somebody there still on, on Main Street, but I like the idea of if you're gonna have other food vendors and they're gonna be on 100 East Block, then that's right there. So that, that solves that as far as, as I can see there, so, so yeah, that'd be fun. Yeah, I think other than that, I don't really have anything else. I guess somewhere along the line, I'll check back in to see how the, how solid the food vendor situation is. And that, just to make sure.
It'll be, it'll be soon, because we need to start getting them lined up. Because they, some of the food vendors need to know early on where they're gonna be on certain weekends.
Yeah.
Like I say, we have a list of those that have done it in the past and even some inquiries about whether or not we're gonna do it again. So we can, we can work together with the Chamber to, to get those notices out.
And is there, are, are, is there fees for food vendors?
Well, we talked about that, and of course, this could be something the council might want to weigh in on it too. But we felt like with all of the things that are going on, to not charge anything for anybody, at least for this year. Now, we'd probably go back to charging next year, but things are just, we just want to encourage more activity and more commerce. And maybe that's a way for us to just help those businesses that haven't been working as much as they would have both had it up before COVID.
Yeah, well, I, I, I agree with that too. That's kind of where my thought was on it. So I just want to know in case. I'll mention to other, I'll mention to the people that I had, was I calling, that it's available and they may want to coordinate with the Chamber or whoever to, the city or whatever, to do it, but that way at least I can tell them there's no bitter fee.
Larry? Yes, Phil and then Nicole.
I totally agree with not, the no fee, especially where we're reopening and we don't know how big it's gonna be or not, so no guarantee. But I really think if the gentleman has already some food vendors that participate in their programs, send that invitation along with everybody else and just first come, first served. We have these many spots and give your application in by this day. That way, they can retain their vendors that participate in their events, because otherwise they'll find other events to go with. And then obviously, we have some vendors around the city already, some coffee shops that have, you know, their mobile, mobile parks, but I think if, I mean, the more the merrier, so...
On that, I think, and it'd be more the Chamber probably doing it than the city to lay out a, a map so everybody knows where they're supposed to be, otherwise we could end up with...
We have the outline starting tomorrow.
I thought so, good.
So it should be done before the end of the week.
Yep, good.
So if you have some names, you can call Shelley and be at our office and let them know what the names are and any contact information you might have if you want to pursue that, as Phil had suggested.
Okay, one of the, one of the vendors will be, the sort of vendor will be the FFA itself. It will be, they're gonna be right there with us.
But they'll be with you?
They'll be with us, so, yeah. They'll be with us, so, yeah, they're going to, currently, we're kind of planning on them setting up a tent straight across from the regular GMA tent. Because part of our agreement with FFA is that they can market some of their, well, they do a lot of metal signs, for example. And they're expanding into other things, stickers and T-shirts, possibly hats, that type of thing. But basically we want a central location for them to be able to show their goods and have a banner out to, to, you know, so that they can be recognized. They will be running our, the plan is right now is for them to run the kids' pedal tractor pull. That the tractor club used to do, so that seemed like a good fit for the FFA kids. So, anyway, along with, their main job is to help us, but as I told them, I want them to be able to make a public appearance there as well. So that's our plan with them. And the only other thing I can think of is we will be having their usual Friday night cruise. So there will be the cruise in at Les Schwab at 6:00 on Friday, which we've been doing past several years. And we do have use of Maryhill loops for the cruise that night to finish off that, which we, again, have been doing for the last several years, so. So we've got basically everything planned as usual there, so. So that's kind of where, that's kind of our main plan.
Do you plan on bringing the antique farm equipment in?
The antique farm equipment is welcome and we have, we have a couple of trophies for tractor classes for them. And then it's kind of up to them if they want to show up or not, because it is an open car show, so nobody's, you know, it's whoever just shows up, but, but, yeah, we, it is, sometimes the, the, Guys and Gals Tractor Club has been the ones that have been bringing it in the past, but over the last several years, they've kind of dwindled down somewhat. And I don't know where they're at at this point, so, but I will be letting Brad know about it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I was wondering.
It does work good if they show up and, and they run their tractor through the parade and then they bring it over into the car show, so it does, it does go well, but it's strictly up to them.
Are you going to have a blow-up car?
Definitely not. No, we have kind of pulled the plug on that particular program. It got harder and harder to work with and we just, we just get away with it.
Okay.
Okay, well, I think we've talked about that pretty well. I think everybody sounded good understanding. Any other comments on the GMA car show?
I'm excited it's going to happen. I think I might have some great pictures from years past that we can use for social media and to get the word out. I know that, Dennis, you do all your advertising, but we, we'll talk about it too.
Well, the same request that I've made for several years is that we like to see, we like to pre-approve what goes out before it goes out.
I can do it.
If it involves GMA. I'm not looking to oversee everybody's advertising, obviously, but where we're involved in it, it just saves on misinformation and any animosity that makes, is created from that. So just so that everybody gets along, I think that works better.
Dennis, I'd only ask, if you know what the FFA is going to present as far as food-wise? That way we can look at the other vendors and, and kind of let them know, so it's not a real competing? And so when you know that, you don't have to answer me now, but when you know what they have, you can just shoot that to us.
Well, I can't answer that right now. I didn't actually say FFA would be doing food.
Okay, just the.
Furthermore, I have talked to Josh Krieg about that and he let me know right away they would not be doing food. So, so, yeah, they'll be doing, they'll be working on their other products, but food is, food is not one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to something that we've been talking about because it's become more of an opportunity now to have additional events and activities that, on the 100 block of East Main. So I just wrote down several things that we could discuss, if you want to discuss them or let me know how you feel about them. But I put down food vendors, which we talked about, not-for, not-for-profit vendors, which is like Kiwanis or DNR or Parks might want to come in and do something, something like that. And then we, in the past, we have had retail vendors. You know, wood finishing, wood products vendors and others similar to that. Saturday market, I didn't know if they would be interested or not.
We'll be talking to the buyer and they.
They might be, the things they've been, the concern they've had in the past is related to the fact there's no shade. But, of course, they can alleviate that with covers and.
They have tents.
Tents and things like that.
They have tents, all of them.
And then the other thing that we need to make sure that's understood, unless there's agreements with the property owners, there's really not much electricity. So we might have to think about the electrical part of it. Certainly, the city would provide the barricades, just like we've done. But there would be an added set of barricades because we've never done that in the past, or at least in the more recent future, more recent past. I put on there that the chamber and the city would help plan it together. We would need to add some porta-potties, especially if we have the food vendors. But we need to make sure that they're in a place that's approved by whoever owns that piece of property.
Right.
And the places to sit, I put down there. We do have some picnic tables. I think it's about six, I'm not sure. But that may not be near enough, so we may want to think about how we.
We have that in what, what we're looking at. So I did want to ask you how many, so six is what you think you're happy with, I think.
So that's what I was kind of thinking about. Those are just some of my thoughts from years past. And especially marking, marking where each one of them is located. If you want to actually use the white paint, I would use white paint and designate the spots as 1, 2, 3, or ABC, or however you want to do that. That's worked pretty well for us in the past. Then that's easy to, to give the vendor a map of your number 16 and then the map of the entire area, you can see where number 16 is.
Right.
Yep. So that, that helps.
So we, I'm sure we've got a copy of Back to 2019's application for vendors. We could just mark it up, make it, make it no cost, right? And.
And we'll put on the website, a digital form. We'll also send it out to the, to our members. That way if they do have an application that they want to submit as a vendor, they can just do it online. Makes it simple.
Yeah.
And then we'll have the map attached to that after we get that worked out.
So, so that way, yeah, if there's no cost, and then just use both logos on it.
So, yeah, we'll have that done.
So are there any comments from this group? This is kind of a new addition to what we've heretofore already kind of said we were going to do with the parade and the GMA show, but do you guys see any issues? Yes?
Yeah, not, not mainly issues, just ideas. I think, I think Kevin was onto something when he said, you know, we want to, we want to show our community. I definitely support the FFA being a huge part of it and, and the work that they do. The vendors, I think, I would hope that more of the vendors are going to be local, even some of the restaurants. And put out a booth out there. But one of, one of the things that our Community Days is missing is community participation. We have a car show, we have the parade, but we're missing community involvement. So I think we need to do more on that. A talent show shows our community. Involvement from, I know I've cruised down on, on Main Street and over by the doctor's office there.
Doctor Ogden.
Doctor Ogden, they're always playing music over there. They gather and play some music, some local talent. Definitely our school has lots of talented kids. The school has jazz group and, yes, it is summer, but, you know, they have jazz band. And they're very well, very talented. So I think we need more of that participation. We need, FFA is definitely showing the talent because I own most of their metal signs. My kids participated in it. And also they do post banners. They do banners for any business that needs a banner. They, they do banner prints. So that's local talent. That's, that's showing our community. So I think we need more direction on showing our community off, the talent that is here. A, a stage with a band is great, but a stage that, community groups, church groups, choirs. I know during Christmas, there's a, one of the church, or several of the church organizations have choirs that they do concerts. Beautiful voices, so why not bring them to Community Days and show that off? That definitely brings more people, you know, because their family, their friends are going to come watch them and it attracts more people out of their homes and out to participate in the events.
Sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble spitting out my words.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I am so on top of what he is saying. A science fair in front of the courthouse. To bring everybody out, maybe with, we'll bring the catering trucks down to feed everybody and make an entire day out of it. Christmas time, you know, let's have the downtown covering lights with carols being sung by people in outfits. I, I, no, I'm, I'm kind of behind that one. That sounds like an outstanding idea. Once again, we have a cool, beautiful little town and we should expand on that as much as we can.
Excuse me, we do have.
If I might.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Elena.
If I'm, thank you. If I might interject a little bit, I thank you to the council member and I apologize that did not catch your name, the gentleman there on the far left, for bringing up the community involvement. The Golden Dill Junior Community Chamber has hosted the live entertainment on the courthouse lawn for the Community Days festivities for a few years now. And we've always been sure to book local acts and entertainment acts, bring in the youth dance groups, jazz groups, things like that. We did do an open mic night, or an open mic afternoon several years in a row. Last year we didn't have, or the year before that, sorry, rather, 2019, we didn't have the best turnout for that open mic hour. But it, it was definitely there and that is really where my group would like to kind of champion those efforts coming back towards. And I've done a lot of research to see how we can make that happen.
Yes, and I, and that's, I, I think that's what's missing from this year because of so many restrictions. Maybe, you know, just making sure that, yeah, it all comes back.
Elena, do you see a window of opportunity to have live music even with the current restrictions?
Yes, within the Road to Recovery Phase 3, it does allow for live entertainment. It also does allow for a beer garden, for a fundraiser for my group, for our scholarship funds, which we have always done in the past. Current Phase 3 restrictions allow up to 400 people until midnight and there is no time restriction for entertainment acts. There are some distancing restrictions, which we would be able to accommodate with having a stage constructed, which Allen's normally does for a cost of about $500. And unfortunately, our gentleman that we have, vendor who we have used in years past, First Sound Lights and Tents, did just pass away this most recent year. So we would need to make some changes to our program on a very short notice. But it would allow for it. Now, the schedule for the June 30th reopening would allow for us to be into full reopening. And based on the governor's medium page and also the questions that I have faced towards the Department of Labor Industries and the Department of Health, everything that I have coming back to me does state that social gatherings will not be restricted once the full reopening happens. That those, those possible restrictions will occur in mass transit, correctional facilities, hospitals and things like ports, those types of facilities, but not in community festivals.
I like the idea of a band playing. Would that be something on the Main Street? Would that interfere with the car show?
Um, yes, actually, it, it, it would. It's pretty, it's pretty distracting.
It would definitely, it would come down to timing, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I would say if there was going to be a band, it would be best on the East block.
Correct, and I can't believe that there is a vacant lot there, so.
Of course, I was thinking about a high school band.
Which is directly across from the General Store. I have put some feelers out there to see if we can get in touch with the owners of that lot to see if we would be able to set up a stage or a flatbed trailer for a band. So with the short notice, we will be kind of restricted, but I have put some feelers out there. I do have one local band that has committed to, basically, they just want to be available. They really want to be involved in Community Days and make it happen. And then I do have another band that we've brought back several years in a row that is local, out of Wasco County, called Live Wire, that has expressed some interest.
So Elena, you would think it'd be best, best done in the parking lot across south of the General Store?
If the goal is to align the events of Community Days with the Main Street proper and not go into the in-construction courthouse area or into something else like Coney Park or the, the World War II Park, somewhere that could accommodate people on a lawn setting, I think that that would be the best opportunity if we're wanting to stay on the Main Street proper and not be invasive to the events of the car show and other things. Trying to find a possible solution. Or maybe even the lot next to the Federated Auto. I could get in touch with the owners of Federated Auto. There's, there are some vacant lot opportunities on Main Street, for sure.
What's that intention of having a beer garden? Is that what you said, Elena?
That's what we've done in years past. What we do is we have the beer garden with all proceeds going to our fundraiser and also offsetting the cost of the live entertainment. Usually it's pretty much wash every year. Doing the, between the, the live entertainment, the beer garden, the cost for that, the setup and then our fundraiser for our scholarship funds that we give away every year. Not to say that that's the only option, but that is just the option that we've always had in the past. Goes well with a lot of the class reunions that are in town, a lot of people coming back to town, like the ability to get together socially, listen to some music, have a drink. And we usually shut down at, you know, that, just at dark time and let everyone go loose to patron the local establishments until the watery hour is over.
Thank you.
So Elena, are you looking to do a band in the evening or like during the afternoon also?
So. So traditionally, what we would do is we would do three bands throughout Saturday with an open mic hour or two in between, just to kind of give the sound a break and give the bands a break. I don't know that with this short time period, we're going to be able to book three bands. And honestly, I'm asking for the bands to pretty much play for free at this point. So it will be tough. I think what we can probably accommodate is one band that's starting directly after the parade to kind of keep people downtown, to keep them engaged in the functions that are going on with the vendors, with the car show, and other festivities that are going on. And then something occurring in the evening for the class reunions that remain in town.
So is the, I was unclear on the beer garden portion. Was that, was that something back on the table?
She had, Elena, you had mentioned the beer garden. Can you expound on that a little bit? Were you thinking about having that downtown, or?
If we were to put in an application for a special occasion permit with the Washington State Liquor Control Board, it would be up to approval by the local authorities and municipalities. Mainly, I would need to get a letter of approval from the city saying that they would allow such a function to occur. It is within the guidelines of Phase Three or full reopening scheduled for June 30th of this year. And then also, the LCB, once they receive that letter of intent and the letter of approval from the city, they put it out to the local police department and local sheriff's department to verify that they will endorse the event, which we've never had a problem with in the past. And that's pretty much the process that we go through to get that approved. We provide them the hours in which we intend to operate. Traditionally, it's been between, I believe, I'd have to look back, it's been a couple of years now, between 5:00 and 10:00 p.m. when we close up, that we are open to the public to be able to purchase beverages and donate to the scholarship fund while they're engaging in the musical entertainment.
Where were you thinking about putting the beer garden? I know it has to have gates around it and vents.
Yes, we would, we are, we've already put a request out to the local feed store to see if they would donate use of the panels. They have traditionally in the past donated use of the panels. And we do try to keep it in close proximity to the music for obvious reasons. And it's basically just a fundraiser. It's in the evening. It's well past the time that the car show is traditionally wrapping up, so that it's not an ear attention to the car showers. And the placement of it, the placement of the beer garden and the music would be entirely up to the city. Traditionally, we've always done it on the courthouse lawn, but it sounds like the courthouse lawn really isn't an option this year for that the city's wanting to host.
Well, it may not be totally out of the possibility, but they do have a lot of construction projects going on, and I'd have to confer with the Public Works Department to see if they would even allow that entertainment and beer garden activity to be held at that location.
Okay.
But I could try that. Do you guys have something to say?
I have an idea. Do you remember the Eclipse, the Eclipse party that we had on Main Street? Elena, I don't think you were there, but...
No, I was.
Oh, you were there. Okay. So the, we put, there was a stage and Lem Pratt, and a group of his friendly musicians played. And there were a lot of people on Main Street that day. And that was a really cool place, because, but it would have to be, as Elena said, after the car show wrapped up.
I don't see that being too much of a clash anyway. I mean, our show wraps up at 4:00, and then we would need somewhere in the ballpark of an hour to get everything cleared out. But that puts you at 5:00, so I mean, it is in the realm of possibilities. I didn't hear, I didn't hear what was going to be going on in the senior parking lot, senior center parking lot?
We're not sure yet. I don't know.
We have to lay everything out, so it's kind of tentative. So my question really was to Elena, if she actually was intending to do an application for a beer garden, just so that we would know, and we would be able to tentatively put that into our plans of how the layout is. So really, that's what my question would have been in the beginning, was just kind of to know if she tentatively actively wanted to pursue that. And then as that falls in place, and we open and things take place, we would already have that designed. And if it was something that couldn't, we would have that taken care of as well. So just having the basic outline. We'll be able to finish that up by the end of the week to make sure that the vendors and that can go into play. And, you know, but we know that she's on the line, that she wants to do that as a fundraiser, that that's typically what they have done. And so we'll put that into our plans as we design it. And then get back with everybody to make sure that all of you here can, you would have access to that outline and see what it is. And Dennis, as the car show goes, you'd be able to say, okay, this works for us as well. And then the businesses as well, so that we can...
I don't see really any conflict there. I was just more interested in finding out if that spot was being utilized, is all, because there was two variables thrown in there, the beer garden and possibility of a band or bands. And then I know in the past, because we've actually had car shows that even have been in the east Maine. So anyway, it's a good area to use, and the senior center's usually pretty cooperative about allowing that space. So I just want to make sure that it was not being overlooked as a potential spot. That's all my...
I'll be tentative and then see what the applications are that come in for the people that want to join us. Because this will be thrown together fast, obviously, because we're just now knowing that we're doing more than just the parade and the car show. So we should have answers pretty fast. We work pretty fast, so maybe we can get that done sooner than not.
My suggestion would be not to go to the courthouse lawn, because now you're splitting further. Also, with the construction, it may cost, with the barricades right now, there's no way to get across the sidewalk over there, so it creates a hazard walking back and forth, especially if you put a beer garden over there and they're walking back on the roadway. So, and then, so I would say east port would be, would be best to have it all day and attract more people to the vendors. The car show attracts people on, you know, because of the cars. And that way, everybody's, sorry, not east port, unmained, just everybody's unmained. And the bands are great, but I'm still going to stick with local talent, you know, fill that with local talent, and the local talent is probably going to be free as opposed to bands. So that would be my thing. And then with that going on, my other suggestion would be just making sure that Public Works, we can get some time in there that maybe paint all the stripes, and make sure that all the crosswalks that may be utilized across Columbus, Broadway, all that area. Maybe some cleanup around downtown, some repainting of parking spot, you know. If we're going to have, we're going to have tourists coming in, let's show our town is nice and prepared and put some time into it. And then, I haven't gone to the observatory, you know, I think they were doing reservations and such. But one thing to consider, and maybe this is too close for this one, is maybe working with Mount Adams Transportation to have shuttle service, because I don't know where all these people are going to park. So, and then if the observatory is open, or we can work with them to, to open that up a little bit more to people that are actually here instead of reservations and things like that, or takes a number of extra guests, maybe having a bus shuttle people back and forth there. But after the school, yeah. But I can see a parking lot probably becoming an issue.
Phil, that is an outstanding idea. We'd have to figure out a way to pay for it, but no, that is an outstanding idea. Take people from these events and take a look at the observatory. And it's a long-range investment. The other thing is, the Community Days is right next to downtown, and people were walking back and forth, and I'm not going to lie, I was one of them, I was one of the fools, walking back and forth between Main Street and the courthouse to see what was going on. I do worry about moving the venue too far, because this should also benefit everybody downtown. Our local businesses, that's the whole purpose of it. Introduce everybody to our wonderful people. My thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm out of questions.
Nicole? Sorry, I had a note here that Nicole had asked if we intended to apply for a special occasion permit. The answer is, if the city will provide us with a letter of approval, I can submit my application and my letter of intent to the Washington State Liquor Control Board for a special occasion permit. I would need some event information, because if we're not going to do it on the courthouse lawn, I will need to know the exact location where it's going to occur, things like that. If that land is privately owned, if it is, I'm going to have to get approval from the landowner, things, and all of those little details that will come along with it.
Okay, so Elena, what? Go ahead.
Sorry, it takes about 30 to 40 days to approve the special occasion permits. Fortunately, with the work that I do, I have direct contact with our local enforcement officer, and I can probably ask him to expedite our application. But that being said, it's still probably going to take around that 20 to 30 days for approval.
Well, I'm going to suggest that you work together with Di and with Nicole, because Di and Nicole are going to put together a map, a plan of where everything's going to look, be located on the 100 block, east 100 block of Main Street.
And I'm very familiar with the liquor board and all of that. I've done beer gardens personally.
So I think you three can put your heads together and come up with a plan.
Yeah, so if we can just kind of do that after we get the outline, just make sure you get ahold of us, Elena, at the chamber. That's really, that's it.
What timeline are you looking at for having that layout?
By the end of the week.
Wrapped out?
By the end of the week.
Perfect. So would you like to set an appointment for you and I and Di to just further discuss on perhaps Monday or Tuesday of next week?
That would be great. Yeah, you're talking to Di, by the way.
Great.
I'm Nicole.
Oh.
That's Di. Hard to tell with voices, disembodied voices.
There's so much distortion when you talk to people over Zoom.
I bet. It's like 9:00, my eyes are...
That's not true. Everybody knows my voice from the moment I speak.
Yes, we do. Well, this sounds, sounds good.
Okay, perfect. Nicole, I will, I do have your phone number unless it's changed. I will be in touch with you first thing tomorrow to get some time scheduled for early next week to further discuss, so that we can get the application submitted. And will I be able to get the letter of approval from the city? Because I will have to submit that along with the application.
As soon as we get the confirmations of where it could lie, and that we can make sure that Larry knows, and then he can approve that upon us knowing that it can be on the premises in which we're putting you, per the owners and what the state will allow.
I think also in laying out your plan, let's map out the times. Because we've got a car show taking up a lot of it, but then when they're done, all that street is wide open for really enjoyable
Right.
other activities as well. So I think if we consider the times, then we can make it much smoother.
Well, see, those food trucks, they could stay.
Yes.
They could stay.
I think one of the considerations, too, just thinking about that, again, probably east Maine would be better, because we do want to bring, we don't want the beer garden to compete with the local establishments either. So one on one end, and the businesses on the other, and then everybody's happy. Because if you put a beer garden in front of one of the local establishments, they might not feel good.
There are my thoughts, Phil, so.
So I understand what you're saying, but was it two years ago, three years ago?
Oh, my gosh.
You had Simcoe put out their own little beer garden, and we gave them permission. Everybody did well. When one place thrives, we all thrive. We feed off each other.
Right.
I'm okay with the parasitic effect in the spirit. You know, I don't think they would be competing. I think they would be going, feeding off each other.
As long as everybody's good.
But still, give me a call. We can talk more about it. And it's getting late. I'm going to go ahead and leave you all.
Yeah, I'm ready to go home.
Where's the camera?
Yeah, hold on, hold on. What's the name of the young lady we've been speaking with? I missed it.
Kevin, my name is Elena James, and I'm with the Golden Dale Junior Community Chamber.
Okay, let me just say this straight out. You are ticklish, you are bright. It has been a wonderful presentation. You have given everything perfectly. Thank you so much.
Always a pleasure.
Right now, any of us would agree to most anything.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's approved.